Storage areas. A benefit of this option is that there is significant flexibility in how it is constructed. All three storage areas could be built over the course of two to three years, or they could be phased over a longer period. This option protects the fewest number of homes from flooding, but is also the least expensive of the three options. At an estimated cost of between forty-eight and fifty-five million in twenty-seventeen dollars, and up to sixty million with construction inflation, option three protects two-hundred-and-twenty homes and eight-hundred-and-fifty-five properties. Another option under consideration is a hybrid of new storm sewer and neighborhood storage. This project improves stormwater conveyance and reduces flooding in southwest Millet through construction of five-point-four miles of new storm sewer, and reduces flooding in Kennelworth Gardens neighborhood through construction of detention storage under Thornwood Park. This project protects the second-largest number of homes and properties from flooding compared to the other options. It is also the second-costliest option compared to the others. The hybrid option will protect two-hundred-and-fifty-three homes and nine-hundred-and-ninety-seven properties during significant rain events, at an estimated cost of between seventy and eighty million dollars, with a project construction inflation cost of up to ninety-one million. Given the costs of the three projects under consideration, residents may ask, why doesn't the village buy out properties that flood, install green infrastructure, or identify some other lower-cost option? Based on hydraulic analysis performed by two independent engineering firms, there simply are no more effective or affordable engineering solutions to provide flood relief west of Ridge Road than those currently under consideration. If none of the three projects are selected, the existing conditions will remain. Homes and streets will continue to flood during many rain events. While the village will work to incrementally improve the situation over time, these efforts will provide little to no flood relief during severe rain events.
This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Willmet Zoning Board of Appeals. Ms. Roberts, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Boyer.
Here.
Mr. Rabke.
Here.
Mr. Schneider.
Here.
Mr. Sermon.
Here.
Chairman Duffy.
Chair's here as well. Ladies and gentlemen, for those of you new to our proceedings, the purpose of this board is to hear evidence on applications for variances from our zoning ordinance and on applications for special use. Based upon the evidence we hear this evening, we will make a recommendation to the Village Board of Trustees as to whether the applications that have come before us should be granted or denied. We will vote to recommend granting or denying each application for variation based on whether the application meets the standards of review set forth in section five-point-four-point-F of our village ordinance. Applications for special use will be considered based upon whether the standards of review set forth in section five-point-three-point-E of our village ordinance are met. The Village Board of Trustees will consider the recommendations we make this evening at their next regularly scheduled meeting on April twenty-fourth. Our recommendations to the board are advisory only. The Village Board has the final say on all applications and will make its own determination as to whether to grant or deny them. The Village Board is not legally bound by our recommendations. There is one small exception to this rule. If this board makes a negative recommendation with respect to an application, in order for the Village Board of Trustees to approve that application, a supermajority of five Village Board members must vote to approve it rather than a simple majority of four. There is one other small peculiarity to our proceedings of which you should be aware. This board does not operate by a majority vote. We operate instead by a tyranny of four. In other words, no matter how many board members are present on a given evening, in order to get a positive recommendation from this board, an application must receive four affirmative votes. Ordinarily, this board consists of seven members. Tonight, due to, well, we have a vacancy, and I'm assuming Mr. Coling will be here. We have, what do we have right sitting here? We have five members, hopefully six. Ms. Roberts, as Assistant Director of Community Development, sits with us tonight in an advisory capacity only and is not a voting member of the board. Please be aware, therefore, that a vote of three to two, or three to three, once Mr. Coling arrives, in favor of an application, will technically go into the record as a negative recommendation with the legal effect that I have previously described. In recognition of this unusual feature of our procedure, when we do not have all members of the board present on a given evening, we give the applicants who are scheduled to come before us that night the option of requesting a continuance to the next available date on our schedule. The next available date for any applicant who would like to request a continuance this evening is April eighteenth. There is no penalty for asking for a continuance. No such request will be held against you when your case is eventually heard. If you wish to ask for a continuance, however, you must do so at the beginning of your presentation before making any substantive arguments as to the merits of your case. Please also be aware that if you request a continuance, there is no guarantee as to how many board members will be present on the evening to which your case is continued. The cases we shall hear this evening will be heard in the order set forth in the pre-printed agenda located at the, on the table at, near the door where you first came in. When your case is called, please proceed to the podium, state your name and address, and tell us exactly why your application meets the standards of review that are applicable to it. Each member of the board is a longtime resident of the village and has visited your property during the past week. In addition, we have received these green, received from village staff these green booklets containing all written information that you have submitted in support of your application, as well as any other correspondence that the village has received. Accordingly, it is not necessary that you repeat what you have already stated in writing. Please, just hit the high points with particular attention to why you believe your application meets the standards of review. After the applicant has had a chance to speak, we will open the podium to others who wish to speak either for or against the application. Everyone will be permitted to have their say, though we would ask that you keep your comments as short and to the point as possible. After we have heard all oral presentations, I will close the evidence, and the members of the board will discuss what they have heard and take a vote. Once the evidence is closed, no further testimony on an application may be offered. The only people entitled to speak during that part of the proceeding will be the members of the board. This meeting is a legal proceeding, and all testimony tonight must be given under oath. If you are here and planning to testify tonight, I would ask that you raise your right hand at this time and be sworn. Do you swear or affirm that you will tell the truth in the testimony that you're about to give? If so, please say, "I do." Thank you. Ms. Roberts, will you please call our first case of the evening?
Our first case is twenty-eighteen Z thirteen, five-seventeen Ridge Road. This is a request for a seven-point-four-four-foot side yard adjoining a street setback variation to permit the modification of a non-conforming wall with a new door opening in a side yard adjoining a street.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Peggy O'Halloran. I am the mother of Danielle Berger, who is requesting this. Her daughter has a out-of-area traveling volleyball event that she couldn't be here to present this, so I'm in her place. As you mentioned, she's requesting a non-conforming side yard adjoining the setback for the French doors leading to the existing patio. And I think probably, and in your notes, you already have the dimensions that she is looking for to have this opening. And there is a unit down the street that does have this already, so it's not that unusual in the location that it is. Is there anything you'd like to ask?
Does anybody have any questions for our applicant?
All you're asking for is a French door opening on that side.
Right.
This is kind of a photoshopped.
Yes, yes. There's an existing patio there, so.
Picture. I got it.
Great, great photography, right.
Any other questions? No? Yeah, this is pretty straightforward. So, I'm gonna ask if there's anybody in the audience who'd like to speak either for or against this case? Seeing no one, I'm gonna ask if there's a board member who'd like to make a motion. Mr. Sermon, thank you very much.
I move directly granting a request for seven-point-four-four side yard adjoining setback variation to permit the modification of a non-conforming wall and a new door opening in the side yard adjoining a street, joining the street at five-seventeen Ridge Road in accordance with the plans submitted.
Second? Second. Mr. Boyer, thank you very much. Mr. Sermon, your motion.
I think it's a very minimal request, probably one of the smallest requests we've had, so I don't see any problem with it, and I'd like to pay a nice attention to the property and the patio that joins it.
Mr. Boyer?
The only thing I would add is I don't, I don't think it's going to pose any issue on the neighbors. I think it meets all the standards of review.
Meets the standards of review. Anybody else with any comments? No? Yeah, I too, I think it meets our standards of review as well, as in, in addition, you know, there's the ARBID that kind of provide a screen from the street to that, that side of the house, so the impact is really negligible, so I too would support it. Why don't we take a vote?
Mr. Sermon.
Yes.
Mr. Boyer.
Yes.
Mr. Coling.
Yes.
Mr. Rabke.
Yes.
Mr. Schneider.
Yes.
Chairman Duffy.
Chair votes yes as well. So that's gonna go as a positive recommendation to the Village Board. They're meeting on April twenty-eighth, right? Twenty-fourth? Twenty-fourth? You might wanna recommend to your, was it your daughter? Yeah, that, that she just attend, just in case there's any questions about it, so. If you could come up and just sign, this is an acknowledgement of your presence and acknowledgement of the dates that we discussed, and sign one, take one. And do I have someone making a recommendation to?
I got it.
You got it?
I got it. Move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for his zoning board of appeals for case number two-zero-one-eight-Z-thirteen.
Second. Mr. Boyer, second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. Moving too fast?
Nope.
When you're ready.
Thank you. Our next case is twenty-eighteen C twelve, ten-fifty-seven Linden Avenue. This is a corrected request, which now reads, "A request for an eleven-foot side yard adjoining a street parking space setback variation, a two-foot side yard parking space setback variation, and a three-hundred-and-forty-five-point-four-seven square foot side yard adjoining a street impervious surface coverage variation to permit a parking pad on the legal non-conforming structure."
Welcome.
Hello.
Welcome back.
Thank you again. My name is Robert Frankel. I own the property at ten-fifty-seven Linden, and I'm proposing to add a ten-foot concrete parking pad right next to the house. There's an existing curb cut in the street, and I'm gonna be starting the parking pad on the parkway, not the parking pad, but the work, so I don't need any additional curb cut work. There's a three-foot setback from the adjoining property, and then there's a sixteen-foot-long parking pad, and then there's an additional five-point-five feet of space between the parking pad and the sidewalk.
But it's, it's solid that whole way. It's not like this.
Solid, but it's, you know, the minimum.
The distance allows.
Right.
Yeah.
So it's, the purpose of setting it back is so you're not blocking the sidewalk.
Right.
When you park.
So how close to the fence do you get with that parking pad?
I think it's three feet.
That is three feet there? Yeah, I can't quite see what that distance is, or, and it's a ten-foot width.
Right.
And, so, you know, curiosity, I mean, that, the garage that's existing right now, in your last presentation, you mentioned that it's, it's quite small and, and challenging for some vehicles. Would you have, consider just taking that off and coming and asking us for a two-car garage there? And I know that you run into some other variances, you know, maybe FAR, maybe, but then it becomes a functional.
I would say that's a possible, a real possibility down the road. Right now, I would like to get this done immediately so I can let those spots be parked.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions?
Currently, I just, can you just review the, currently, you can't park in the streets in that area?
On Poplar, you can't park at night, and on Linden, there's an eight AM to ten AM no parking because of the trains.
And, and on Poplar, eight AM to ten AM.
Or maybe also.
I think there's a two-hour window on Poplar, too.
Could be.
Any other questions?
Could you go over again? It may have been in, in the last meeting, that, how did the driveway that benefits the neighbor, how did, how did that come about? Do you know?
I don't understand the question.
The driveway, there's a driveway portion that goes across the, the back corner of your lot, right?
Right.
Do you, do you know the history of that?
I don't know the history of that, no.
Okay, but, but that's actively used?
That's actively used as access for the neighbor's garage.
Okay. And so that's adding.
I saw somebody raise their hand, actually.
I live in that house.
Oh, do you?
Yes.
All right, well, okay, so, when we're finished, if you feel like coming up and commenting, you, we'll, we'll give you the opportunity. So what we're looking at here, it looks like is, there's impervious surface partially caused by the driveway, right, of the neighbor? But we're adding impervious surface here for a parking pad, but we're getting a car off the street, and, oh, we're looking for hardship, the hardship here.
There's a, there's a few hardships. It's really a non-functional situation. The lot is small, it's triangular shaped, you couldn't get a variance to put another parking spot anywhere on the site. It's very difficult because of the angled way of the curb cuts. When there's winter time, you sometimes can't even make it in the garage with a big vehicle. Actually, you can't often, depending on the snow and the ice on the parking pad. Most houses have two-car garages, or two-car availability to park two cars, and it's a real hardship, you know.
Like, I think what we're looking for when we refer to hardship is not an inconvenience to somebody, but rather a uniqueness to the property or the sighting of the house on the property that causes you to have to be into these setbacks or anything to make your request.
Yeah, I would say it's the side, the shape, the size of the lot, the shape of the lot, and the fact that you can't put up another parking spot anywhere on the site without a variance.
Okay. Are, are any other questions for our applicant?
Does, does that intersection see a lot of traffic, Poplar and Linden?
I think during rush hour, it does see a lot of traffic.
All right. And is there any backups ever? Is there any traffic that's, that is?
Where's it, where would, the backup down Linden, right?
Yeah, cars would have to queue up on Linden, waiting for the signal to change at Green Bay.
Right.
Because this is one of the six.
Crosses.
Crossings in Willmet to get across the MetroTrax. Do you see?
I don't really know.
You don't know?
Okay. Comment honestly on it.
How long have you lived here?
I've owned the property three, about three months.
Oh, okay.
But he doesn't live in the property.
It's a rental property.
Oh, it's a rental. Oh, okay.
And how large is the house? And how many bedrooms? The house is fourteen-hundred feet. There's three bedrooms. There's also a phenomenon that often a car gets parked in the apron, which blocks the sidewalk because there's nowhere else to park.
Okay. Any other questions for our applicant? No? Okay. So I'm gonna ask if there's somebody that, anybody that in the audience that would like to speak either for or against this application, and provided a question arises or something, you have the opportunity to come up and, and still reply or add any information, okay? So is there anybody in the audience that would like to come forward with, in either support or against this? Nobody? Yes? You would? Okay. Come on up. And I, I need you to introduce yourself and state your address, and then share with us your comments.
My name's, hello. My name is Marie Jones. I live at ten-fifty-eight Linden, which is across the street from this property. I've lived at that address for thirty-one years. I want to say, just in general, I want to speak to the nature of this neighborhood. This is a stretch that is technically Zoned R-two, that stretches about a block down on the north side and close to two blocks on the south side. It's a neighborhood that, over the past thirty years, has seen a great deal of investment by the property owners in, in improving and upgrading the properties. This includes extensions. Our next-door neighbor to the east got an award from the village for converting a workman's cottage to a two-story Victorian. The people to the west of us did a renovation down to the studs and produced a one-point-two million-dollar house. Up and down the block, almost every single property has been invested in and improved by the owners, including the two corner properties, ten-fifty-seven and ten-sixty-two, both of which are on very odd lots. And in general, I'm concerned about impervious surface coverage. In this case, I think the uniqueness of the property argues in favor of granting the variances, because it will allow the owner to have the kind of convenience of two parking places that other people in the neighborhood have. This is an important property visually for the village, that it be maintained well by the owner, and I think that this request should be viewed favorably for that reason. I don't know whether the neighbor immediately to the east of this property is going to speak. I mean, that person is more immediately affected by this, but speaking as someone across the street, I do favor it. In terms of your question about backup on Poplar, you know, I see that intersection all the time. The backup on Poplar is much more serious coming south, because people come out of that parking lot, turn right, and then either go straight or go around the corner on Linden to cross the tracks. There's sometimes a backup on Poplar coming north, but not very frequently, and only maybe at certain rush hours. Time, in general, that, that traffic flows pretty well.
But there, but there are times where it, in a residential area, relatively residential area, there's, there's traffic backups more, more than other residential intersections in Willmet.
It's a busier intersection than many, simply because we have that traffic light to go over the tracks. And when there's a backup on Linden going west, and people coming north on Poplar have trouble turning left onto Linden to get across the tracks. I mean, that's the main problem at that intersection, but it only happens at very limited times of the day. Most of the time, that intersection is free-flowing. I'm someone who comes north on Poplar all the time, and I rarely have a problem getting across the intersection of Linden.
Are there many cars parked on the side, on Linden or on Poplar? Nobody can park overnight, right?
I'm sorry?
No, no, I'm sorry, nobody can park overnight on either Linden or Poplar? Is that correct? Or, or is it just the two-hour window, that eight-to-ten limitation?
Parking on those?
Parking on the streets, yes.
Well, on Linden, you park eastbound, but there is that restriction from.
Eight-to-ten, I think it is.
In the morning.
You can't park overnight on Poplar.
Either. Yeah, I was looking for that sign. I didn't see anything, because right across the street from your property, there's parking spaces.
From five, or from three to five in the morning, it's like some weird hour, which.
Is that, okay, I missed that sign, then.
You can park overnight on Poplar. Linden, you park overnight in the afternoon.
Eight-to-ten in the morning? Okay.
When you park overnight, you go down to Eleventh Street.
Go down to Eleventh, and there's, on the crossing, yeah, around the corner, yeah? Block down.
Which is a, which is a long hike in the rain or cold weather, so.
Okay. It was, yeah, you're very welcome. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to speak either for or against this case? Okay, please come up. And, Mr. Frankel, you can have a seat while they're speaking, so you, you don't have to stand there. Hello, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Jane George. I live at ten-fifty-five Linden. It is a property directly east of Mr. Frankel's property, and I've lived there for fourteen years, so I've, in the fourteen years, I think there's been six different people living there, some renters, some owners, and the parking situation has always been problematic for them. I didn't know that there was no overnight parking on Linden, but I would say if I had a car, I'd be hesitant to park it on Linden because it's such a heavy traffic, you know, street, and especially during rush hour with the, with the train. I know people going west on Linden will often, who need to turn onto Poplar, will just go on the opposite side, on the, they'll go against traffic to, to turn either way onto Poplar, so I wouldn't, for those reasons, I would never really park a car on Linden. Mr. Frankel and I have talked a lot about this property. I would say that the impervious surface, I don't know really what to make of that. I'm not a mathematician or anything. To figure out what that will do, we talked about water flow and, and where that would go, and he seemed to think there wouldn't be any issue with that, so, so what I'm saying is I wanted to make sure that my property would not be flooded by the rain or fall-off coming off of that. It's, it's a tricky, it's a tricky piece of property. It's a tricky house. I know that when you talk about taking the garage down and putting up a larger two-story garage, that I would not be in favor of, because, as I think Maria had said, some of the other improvements that were made on Linden, two houses down, in my backyard, where we used to be able to look straight down and see all the trees, there was a house that was built in there. House blocks our whole backyard, so if there were a two-car garage put on the property at ten-fifty-seven, that would essentially kind of just block us in from a airflow and, and type of enjoyment of the backyard.
Can I ask a question? You've lived there for fourteen years, you said. Do you recall when you bought that property where you live now?
Yeah.
Did that, did the, the.
Right-of-way.
Access, right-of-way.
Yeah, it was there.
Exist, it was there?
There's always been a driveway there. We did replace the garage. I forget, Lisa, I don't know if you probably don't remember, but it was a while ago. There actually was, I think it was a horse barn there on the property, so we replaced that, but the driveway remained the same. We didn't make any changes to the driveway, so.
Any other questions?
Is that driveway, is there a recorded easement for that driveway?
Yes.
Any other questions? No? All right, thank you very much.
Okay.
Are there any other questions for our applicant?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Frankel, if you could come back up, thank you.
What is, at the shortest distance of the triangle, what is the distance from the property line to the back of the parking pad? I see you have on your drawing a sixteen-foot dimension. It's referenced different times as a eighteen or twenty-foot pad, but what's the dimension to the back of the pad from your property line? I believe it's sixteen plus five-point-five, or twenty-one-point-five.
Yeah, I'm not sure either. Can you clarify what you're asking there? You're trying to.
This dimension here, from the property line to the back of the pad.
Okay.
That makes sense, twenty-one. You know what he's asking?
Twenty-five. Yeah, I believe that's what it is.
Well, it's, it's, it looks like it's more than sixteen on this drawing. Is, he says, did you see it, Lisa? He says from here to here. What's this dimension?
From the property.
I think we figured it was twenty. There's a four, four feet from the lot line to that point.
Okay, so it's tw, did you hear, Lisa? It's about twenty feet?
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any other questions for our applicant?
That's the property line, property line, or to the sidewalk?
So property line, which is the sidewalk, it looks like.
Is the edge of the sidewalk?
No, 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 no.
You have another foot or two?
It's a difference.
Right.
From this line right here?
Yeah.
Okay, so the property line to the back lot, and then you get about a foot between the property line and the.
To the property line.
And the sidewalk.
If you look at the existing, the garage.
To clarify this, could you, could you pull out the thing, and we'll talk about the same page, and turn to one-point-four.
I think all we're gonna get is about this. Okay.
So there's a little knob on the side of the podium. If you pull that out, it creates a table, and there's an overhead projector in the ceiling that, if you put that on the table, yep, that will get brought, there you go.
There you go.
So clarify that distance from the property line.
It looks to me like, from the property line, there's twenty, and there's twenty, roughly twenty-one and a half to the curb.
So there's sixteen feet plus five feet to the property line.
Right.
To the curb.
Little less, probably four.
Looks like eighteen. I mean, it looks a lot less, and I'm not sure. I mean, it looks a lot less, and I'm not sure why we don't have an accurate drawing showing that. Because this other drawing is not, I mean, if you, you take this drawing...
Yeah.
And you scale off of it and you say, well, that's 10 feet, and you put 10 feet here, and then you put 10 feet there, there's not much left.
You're off the property line, yeah.
Yeah, you're off the property line.
I took a measurement of, it's over 20 feet for sure. It's a minimum of 20 feet.
But then the survey is off.
I can't address that.
I mean, I can't, without accurate dimensions on here, I can't support it.
All right, Lisa, Lisa went to get something.
Okay.
If you, if you look at 1.3, is that what you're looking at?
Yeah, I mean, if you took another...
So, so 1.3, the garage is, is 20.74 feet, right?
Yeah.
And they're going, some, what it looks like a foot or two beyond that garage, right?
They do have four foot, 3.7, you know, the...
See, this is the problem on the survey. If this is 10 feet and you go from that corner, you're out here, you're past the property line according to the survey, which is different than the drawing. I know it's similar.
Okay.
So if we were to...
The drawing is...
Then the width of the, then the width of this pad is over the property line.
All that does is shorten the setback then, right?
Yeah, but if he's got 10 feet of width next to his garage...
Now, the short side, I guess, it'd be about 18.
Right.
So he's over the property line with his parking pad or the drive to his pad.
Well, he's gonna be a foot and some that way too.
No, because he's got to come across here, right?
Right, right, it's gonna be paved anyway.
Right, so it's gonna be paved anyway, so it comes down into here. Is there enough room between the sidewalk and the corner of the garage to say that's 10 feet of width before you're at the sidewalk? Is that basically what you're asking? Am I correct? Mr. Robke, if you looked at 1.3 and you took 10 feet off the corner of the garage, does that put you into the sidewalk? Is that, that's what you're questioning, right?
Well, I'm trying to understand the scale and what dimensions. If he's, yeah, I'd like to know where that, I want to understand how a car fits relative to the property line to the sidewalk. So how far beyond the garage are you proposing extending this pad?
10 feet, right?
No, to the east.
Beyond the house garage.
Be 1.37 feet, right?
Is there a dimension? I gotta bring a survey with me.
On the existing survey.
So on 1.3, which is the next page back, there's dimensions on...
Okay, so that's what it would be then.
Where's 1.3?
On 1.3, it shows that...
4.37.
Right, but he's extending beyond that.
Yeah, but he's leaving three feet, so he's adding 1.37. 1.4 feet.
So that's roughly where 20 feet holds. And, but all he needs is 16 to be like a legal parking space, and that's pledging this number?
This distance right here.
Yeah, yeah, it's probably a little more that way.
I just don't know the width of the lot.
So here's, Lisa, if you take...
Lisa drew the pad onto his survey using the width of the garage's 10 feet, and you can see that the 20 feet puts it roughly at the edge of the sidewalk or just on the sidewalk.
Puts it on the sidewalk, according to the...
But that's, but that's not being accurate with the east distance, the distance to the east.
This dimension here, this dimension here appears to be the same as that dimension, which is about 18.
Appears to be.
Yeah.
Okay. If we don't know, we don't, I mean, I'd like to, to know the dimensions.
All right, are there any other questions for our applicant? Nothing.
Hold on.
Okay.
Looking at my notes. Nope.
Okay. We have nothing else. Yeah, I'm gonna ask if there's, make sure there's nobody else that has any for or against. All right, we're all set. Can I have a motion from, okay, Mr. Snyder?
Need a second?
No, I need you to make a motion.
A move to recommend granting a request for an 11-foot side yard adjoining the street parking space setback variation and a two-foot side yard parking space setback variation, a 345.47 square foot side yard adjoining the street, a street impervious surface coverage variation is required to permit a parking pad on the legal non-conforming structure at 1057 Linden Avenue in accordance with the plan submitted.
Do I have a second? Mr. Kohlins, second. Thank you very much. Mr. Snyder, your motion.
We talked about this the last time when we also included the air conditioning unit, and to me, this is not a difficult case. First of all, the parking on the streets, adjoining streets is restricted, number one. Number two, the way this lot is configured, a triangle lot, at most, without any variation, all you could build is a storage structure, a storage, simple storage thing. It is so restricted if you include all the setbacks that are needed. This does not, as we've heard from residents, neighbors, this does not negatively influence values of adjoining properties. It fronts Poplar Street and then the Metro train line. It takes a car off the street. This is a simpler request that I can imagine, and I strongly recommend that we support this.
Okay. Mr. Kohlins, your second.
Yeah, I mean, this is another one of those odd lot, odd shaped lot situations that we run into from time to time, lack of parking on the street. You know, the impervious surface coverage variations are a little bit of an issue. The fact that we just bought recently, and you kind of knew what the status of the property was, and you're renting it out, you know, mitigates against a little bit, but I think unbalanced, given the other parking constraints in the area, I can support it.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, I'm troubled by putting a car a foot or two from the property line and calling that a parking space and a solution to what is admittedly a parking problem and admittedly a difficult site, but I'm troubled by it. You know, I think our goal is not to have cars parked on property. We want them in garages. We, I'd be more inclined to be considering setbacks to incorporate a garage or do some other reconfiguration. I guess I'd like to hear what others also have to think.
I'm still on the fence. I mean, I completely understand the parking issue. I think it's an odd sight. Everything else, I agree with all those comments. The concern I have is if, if, you know, there's not a sidewalk on both sides of the street there, if you're walking on that side, is that, is that car gonna be blocking the sidewalk? A standard parking lot space, I mean, this is 10 feet wide, but a typical parking space in a mall or anywhere else is nine by 18, and he's showing 16 on the property. And visually looking at it, you know, it's more, it's right near the edge there, and you know, if there's, I guess you plow and you shovel all the snow so it's not in the front, so your car doesn't hang over, but my concern would be the car blocking the sidewalk.
Okay. Mr. Boyer, your comments?
So I think when originally the applicant came before us, this, this request was withdrawn, right? And so we really didn't get into a large discussion about hardship, and we just kind of touched on that, and I think the applicant did a reasonable job with describing some of the hardships, and I think as a board, we understand the issues that this lot has and the siding of the house. So before, you know, before I was on the fence, I do share some other concern about not having the accurate dimensions for this, but unbalanced, looking at all of the things that this, that challenges this lot, you know, again, the configuration, the triangle shape, it's a side yard adjoining a street, which limits where you can have parking. It creates additional setbacks, the neighbor's driveway over the rear of the lot, the house is sited at a corner. It's a busy corner. It's a three-way stop with a signal with Metro tracks on a, on a street that, that takes you all the way to Sheridan, all the way to the CTA station, to St. Francis, theaters going from St. Francis, Central School, parents dropping off or going to Central School, people using Poplar to get to Isabella, to get to Sheridan Road. All of these things create difficulty for this lot, not to mention the parking restrictions that are on both lots and Citadel employee parking, so, and commuter parking across the street, right? So all of these things together, I think, should encourage us to give this applicant some relief from the zoning codes. So I do share the concern, I do want to talk about a little bit more about the dimensions and where the car is actually gonna fit. That is, you know, I still have a little bit of a hang-up on that, but if any lot needs some relief for parking, this is one of those lots with, with all of the issues that are, you know, imposed to it.
I would, I would echo your sentiments. I agree with the relief. I'm just not convinced that this is the solution that is either the best solution or the one that we want to approve, not being clear on these dimensions. And again, how close to the sidewalk are we really gonna be parked with cars? You know, I'd rather see this fixed long-term with a proper garage addition or something to fix it, but...
Even with, but, so just to piggyback on that, even if we did a garage, you would have, it may create, and you know, this is, now we're talking possibilities of what, what could happen in the future, right? But even if you put a garage there, then you have an issue of backing out of a garage without being able to see anybody who's on the sidewalk, right? So...
But you got that.
Right next to the building now anyways.
You got half that issue now. Right. Well, you don't have it if you have the parking pad. I mean, you've, you're up against the garage.
Right next to the garage.
Yeah.
So that's no different than pulling out of a garage from that side.
Right.
Well, he's saying that if you're on, if you're on the lot, if you're on the parking pad, you can look out your window.
Right, right.
But you can't see through the garage.
Can't see to the north.
Well...
It's the same, this is from this side. It's just like being in a garage. You have relief on this side. We're admittedly, it's closer.
So half, so one side's safe, one side's not. All right, so at least, at least half the side is safe, I guess.
Garage would require greater variances. It's 20 feet rather than 18.
That's true. It would, it would, you would be encroaching on the eastern side, property line, but, but you know, it's certain, I think it would be more functional.
It would get the cars off the street and off the setback.
A garage with a pad is more functional. No, the existing garage is, is a cube that is, you know, looks like it's maybe eight or 10 feet high by, you know, 10 feet wide and 20 feet deep. To fit certain vehicles in there would be a greater challenge. So my thought is if you put a two-car garage there, more, you know, 20 by 22 or something like that, you've got, it's a tight fit, as I looked at it on...
20 by 22 wouldn't work, I don't think. You'd be up against the property line.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Well, if you'd always have two spaces, and we're told that you can't pull into the existing garage in acclimate conditions, then there's not two spaces. It's not fixing the problem. Is the other one gonna be backed up both on the pad or, I don't know?
All right, well, you know, as I, I looked at it from outside, I shared my, my comments about it, but in the drawing, you know, the one question that I have is how much distance is there between the existing driveway of the neighbor and the proposed parking pad? On their drawing, it seems pretty great, but on the, on the survey, it looks then to be not as great a distance, and that's something that I wish I would have gotten out of my car this morning and looked at, but that's our impervious surface issue. So I, I believe that this is probably the second best solution for this site, and you know, I...
You already have one objection to a garage that was stated earlier.
Yeah, I get it.
It might be two outdoor parking spaces with...
Take down the garage and just have two pads? Or one pad? A carport?
Carport.
We had one of those growing up. All right, you know, I'm, I'm on the fence on this, but I probably will end up supporting it because I think it's a, it's a reasonable solution to the issue. Why don't we take a vote?
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Kohlins?
Yes.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Mr. Robke?
No.
Mr. Sermon?
No.
Chairman Duffy?
Chair's gonna vote yes, aye on this one. So this is gonna go as a positive recommendation to the Village Board. Meeting's on the 24th April. They'll see our comments and our questions, and they may have something for you. I'd suggest that you show up on the 24th. All right, can you come up and just sign one of these letters for us and then take the other with you? Thank you very much. Some of that's gonna ask the chairman to have the chairman, how many times do you read this and I can't remember?
I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number 2018 AC dash 12.
Thank you, Mr. Kohlins, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well.
Our next case is 2018 C2, 3730 Lake Avenue. This is a revised request for a three-foot side yard setback variation and a three-foot separation variation to permit the retention of a grill island.
Hey, do you guys have your names on seats yet?
We do. We should, right?
Welcome back.
Got a parking spot too.
Yeah? And a pad, yeah.
So we did have some revisions to our initial request, and I know there's a lot of discussion on the few guys as well as the trustees around...
I'm gonna call time off.
Yes.
Yes.
I thought you knew it, jumpscare. Mina Baruda, 3730 Lake Avenue.
I'm Steve Baruda, 3730 Lake Avenue.
All right, and it's not for us. It's for the five people that watch. They may have not seen you last time. Okay, sorry.
So at the trustee meeting, there's a lot of discussion around the AC as well as the retention of our grill island and the variation request. We did decide to not move forward with the completion of the pergola over the grill and was moving forward with the AC and just retaining the grill island. Trustee, trustee Plunkets and some of the other trustees had said that since we revised it, that potentially we can come back to you guys to see if your decision would change based on some of the revisions of our request. We decided also to voluntarily move the AC unit to a conforming location, so we will be doing that. We're gonna be moving it to the rear of our yard, and we will, we're working on getting proposals and determining who's gonna do the work, and we'll work with Lisa and John on the appropriate permits needed to do that. So we're here today to just ask for the retention of the grill island that's left of our case. It's been there for almost six years. It is three feet from the property line. We understand that we could potentially move it five, 5.98 feet north and still keep it three feet from the property line, and it would be within, within code. Obviously, there's a lot of expense to do that, and it's still within that three feet of that property line, so we're asking the board to really consider us being able to retain it. I know there were questions on the permit and how it all happened. At the end of the day, an inspector was out there, and we really didn't realize that it wasn't within code or that there was anything wrong with it. The footings were there, the grill island was there. I know we can't rewind six years ago, and there's no record of anything, but it was there, so that's what we're here to ask for today.
So in a way, what we're saying is the hardship is that, hey, if this was just five feet further back, we'd be in the rear yard and we wouldn't have to deal with the side yard setback that's, that we're having to deal with right now.
Lisa, is that accurate, that if it was moved... That if it was moved, the five and some changed feet, it could remain three feet from the lot line and be conforming?
That is what we figured, yes.
Okay. And then, you're going to cut down the...
We already did.
Oh, those are down.
It's gone.
Sorry.
We were going to approve it.
That's okay.
That's a terrible joke.
That is a terrible joke. Alright, so...
They do still have the seat here at the garage, though.
Just in case.
Who, there, that fence, it's a black, like, four-foot fence between the property lines? Whose fence is that?
That's ours.
That's your fence, okay.
But between the two houses is a, what, a six-foot fence, right?
Six-foot stockade, yeah.
But in the backyard, it's, it's a four-foot...
The metal, right.
Right.
Prettier, nicer fence.
So, originally, we had some pergolas, we had the air conditioning, and now we're just down to the...
Just the grill.
That's it.
The paving, and the issue was the grill is there, and because it's fixed, it's an accessory structure. We talked movable, not movable.
Right, portable could be up along the fence line with an ugly yellow umbrella, and all that would be okay, but, yes.
What's the, what's the height of the...
Sorry, bright.
Of the grill island? Do you know?
Um, no.
I don't know.
Looks like the...
Nah, it's going to be two, solid four, four-plus.
I was going to say, the height of the grill, it just looks to be higher.
The height of the grill is a little higher, correct. The grill island, I mean, it's counter-height, so 30...
Yeah, like a standard grill size.
Yeah. And then the lid is obviously...
It's like four and a half feet or so, probably about...
There's a picture. I don't have the dimensions, but...
It's above the fence.
Just right, right around the fence.
It's above the fence line, but that's just the top of the grill. The countertop itself is 36 or 38 inches.
Inches above, because it's a big top, yeah.
And currently, it's three feet off of the fence.
Correct.
To where it starts.
Where the back of the grill island starts, yeah.
But it was, if it was just slid further...
5.8 feet north to the golf course. It could maintain that three feet from the property line.
And if you didn't have the countertop, basically, then you could, you can put your grill right up against the fence, right?
Correct.
It's a movable grill, yeah.
If it's a movable grill.
As Mr. Kolling pointed out last meeting. Alright, any other questions for our applicant before I see if there's...
Did you recall how much it cost to do the, the back patio six years ago? Just curious.
Alright, any other questions?
If you, if you, just theoretically, like, six years ago, if you were trying to pull a fast one, let's say, and put in the grill without a permit, would you have done that when you're doing other work that was permissible, that needed to be, needed to have inspectors come out? Or would you have waited until after all the work is done and then do it when there's no inspectors around?
We didn't do that.
No.
Yeah, but they run a gas line over there, so, they got to run a gas line underneath the patio. So, it had to be done at the same time. Yeah. Alright, any other questions for our applicant? Nothing, okay. I'm going to, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak either for or against this case? Okay, please come up. Why don't you guys have a seat while we have other comments. Welcome back.
Glad to be back. My name is Barbara Pearlman. I live at 3736 Lake. I am the neighbor of the applicant here tonight. This case has really garnered a lot of attention, hasn't it? Todd Marver wrote a review article on it in the Willmet Beacon, specifically naming this case back in February when it was remanded back to you. And it specifically cited variation requests without permits. Of course, this is to be continued for review by Willmet residents. But for the viewers tonight, contemplating illegal builds, don't do it. You have nothing to fall back on without a permit. It's against Village Codes, and there are consequences. In answer to the property owner's letter to the zoning Board of Appeals dated March 9th, 2018, the property owners proposed to have me agree to their keeping the illegal grill island, but there was a catch. I was to agree to this, for they're not installing an accessory structure in their rear yard within six feet of their west side lot line. I do not agree to the proposal, but I would urge them, and I would urge any Willmet resident to build whatever, whenever, wherever they want legally on their property, as long as it is legal and meets Willmet standards for variation and for zoning ordinances. The grill island does not meet those standards as evaluated earlier and was built merely for convenience. There are and were no hardships and no conditions. It does not meet the criteria that Willmet sets forth in its ordinance for legal build. I do not want it grandfathered in, and I hope the ZBA will understand that for those reasons, and also, both for me and for any future owners of my property. Corporation Counsel Mr. Stein during the Board of Trustees meeting specifically said that in his opinion, and I quote from page 10 in the minutes of that board meeting, that a neighbor's agreement is not what our zoning ordinance would allow, as subsequent homeowners may not agree, in the quote. He also stated, and I quote, that there are no statute of limitations on a municipal ordinance violation like this. After testimony by the property owners through an earlier ZBA meeting and recent testimony and questioning by the Board of, by the Board of Trustees, I'm just wondering if there's anyone really in this room who still believes that the grill island was built in 2012. Is there anyone? Six years seems to be the sticking point here. But didn't that date come up when the property owners tried to unsuccessfully contend that it was part of a flatwork build that we all reviewed, which by the way, was also cited by the village? Wasn't there an unsuccessful attempt to stack this build on an existing build that was cited? Mr. Stein, a Board of Trustees member, clearly stated they built illegally and they got caught. Their story is all over the place. Everyone's examined it every which way. Didn't everyone point out that the flatwork was a replacement for patio pavers? Didn't that permit have very strict writers pointed out so there could be no mistake whatsoever? Didn't the platyp survey clearly state exact replacement of impervious surfaces only? No expansion, no modifications permitted? And that was all in a cloud, right with the permit. And on a separate sheet was written, no change in size, location, or configuration. Changes in elevation was written, requires a grading permit, which clearly would have eliminated the grill island. Under oath, during zoning, and later during the Board of Trustees meeting, the property owners stated that when the inspectors came out, they didn't say anything about the final inspection, about the grill island during the final inspection. Again, in this most recent letter to ZBA, the inspectors still didn't say anything or make a note about the grill island. Because we all realize now, don't we? Was there really a grill island? Do you really think there was a grill island at that time with experienced inspectors that do this all the time? Isn't that exactly why there were no red flags waving? You know, an illegal build...
We deal with facts, maybe, instead of speculation.
You know, I might have to get some water there, because I'm getting a little dry. Lisa has a bottle of water, that would be great, and I will speed it up.
So, can I ask you a question while you're getting the water?
Yeah.
You stood in front of us, and I asked you if you were in support of this, of keeping the grill island, the last time you were here, and you said yes. But then you came before the, the Village Board, and you said, no, you're no longer in support of it. So, now you're telling us you're still no longer in support of it, right?
I don't think that I ever said I would support the grill island.
I asked you specifically, and, and you said you were okay with it. If they didn't put up the pergola and they could keep the grill island, I asked, and you said yes. It's, and Chair, trustee Sullivan even brought it up during the meeting, that you have flip-flopped on your opinion of the grill island. So, I'm just asking, is that...
Well, I'm going to tell you that based on the comments made by Board of Trustees members, and based on the fact that I'm trying to protect my property, based on the fact that it's three feet from the property line, based on the fact that it does not meet the ordinance for my, and for myself and future owners, I feel that I have every right to protest this, and I do not feel that you should go ahead with it.
You do, you do have a right, absolutely, for sure.
Yeah, we're not denying you the right. I'm just trying to clarify what you said last time, and then, did you change your opinion? And now you're here, and you're reading us a, a statement that really is just, you know, you're, you're trying to, to dance around a lot. And what we want to know is, does the grill island negatively impact you right now?
It negatively impacts me because I know it is against Village Ordinance.
Well, so, because it's against Village Ordinance, it bothers you, not because of its existence and use, right? So, so if they're grilling, is it bothering you?
It isn't bothering me. It's three feet from my property line. I couldn't reach out and touch it.
Right.
Right through the fence. I mean, there's a reason for ordinance requirements by the village, and I would imagine that's one of the...
Five feet further back into the backyard?
Well, it would be, and as I said, it would be conforming.
Right.
I don't care what anybody builds.
And it would be no further away from your property line?
Exactly.
So, the only reason you're objecting to it is because it's breaking a rule?
I'm objecting to it because it does not clearly fit into Willmet's zoning ordinance.
Okay.
Okay, fair enough.
But, just to be clear, but it does not, you're saying, did I hear this right? It does not impact you directly? It, it, you're just concerned that it doesn't fit in the zoning codes?
So, the function of it isn't bothering you, it's that it doesn't fit into the zoning code?
Exactly. And that's my argument.
Okay, so it doesn't fit into the zoning code, but functionally, it doesn't bother you?
Exactly.
Okay.
So, I wanted to mention that this property owner used two portable grills. They used two portable grills in 2011, 12, 13, and 14. 2015...
But they can, they, it's a portable grill, so that's, that's not against the ordinance.
How does that have bearing on...
Right. And those grills were put on the side of the house when they built their island in 2015. This is not a, a five- or six-year-old build. I, you know, I started out...
I, I, please, I just want to stick to the case that we have here, is their request for variance, and to have brought up that there were two portable grills that they used in the past is irrelevant to the request that we have. So, if we could just stick to this request?
I understand.
Okay.
I'm trying to point out that this request is not a five- or six-year-old request. It's maybe a year and a half from the time they were turned in, in 2017. This has been going on for eight months now. This, if they built in 2015, and if they were turned in in 2017, it's a year and a half. It's not five or six years that it's been in place. And all these poor people have had this thing in place for, you know, five or six years. Why would we make them move it now?
So...
That's, that's what's in front of us. So, you're saying it wasn't built in 2012?
Right.
It was not built in 2012, and I clearly said that, and I'm sure there's eyeballs rolling here, but I said that I was not going to make this a he said, she said. So, I let all of the testimony speak for itself.
So...
I think there's two separate issues, though, and we've had this philosophical discussion before. We, we all are upset when something is built without a permit, but ultimately, we're the zoning board, our answer, our jurisdiction is to comment on the validity of a request for a zoning variance. The issue of this having been built, and this was even talked about in, as in the minutes of the, the Board of Trustees meeting, that there's a separate issue of, of enforcement and people building without permits and what to do about that. I think our discussion should focus on the merits of the zoning case and not about the ramifications that may or may not exist from having built without a permit, at least with regard to testimony from others.
Right, so it is not our place, as Mr. Rabke is pointing out, to penalize somebody for not pulling permits and getting caught. That is the Village Board.
Right.
Okay. What we look at is an interpretation of the zoning code as it applies to the request.
Exactly.
Okay. So, are, what, do you have more to add to your objection?
Well, I don't see how this apply, how this conforms to the zoning ordinance.
Clearly.
And certainly not to the standards for variation.
Clearly.
And I make that strong argument. I included pictures tonight that speak to the veracity of the comments that were made under oath by this property owner in the last ZBA meeting.
So, what, these pictures, you took pictures of this, of the side of their house, the walk that they have on the side of their house?
Mm-hmm.
What, how does that have bearing on, on what we are talking about right now?
Well, we were talking about the fact, actually, you had asked them specifically about what was going on at their house, what kind of building, and in the middle of, and after this was turned in in 2017, they went ahead just a few months ago and built this brick walkway behind the garage, and you asked them specifically...
You mean along, between your house and their house?
No. They're, the back of their house where they keep their garbage containers.
It's the side of their house?
This, well, the side of their house.
Between your house and their house.
Yeah. And it was built again just a few months ago without a permit again. I mean, this has been going on for years. And you asked them, well, you know, how, how long is this walk? And they responded that it was five or six feet. It was also mentioned that each one of these tiles was a foot square. This was not five or six feet. It's an 18 and a half-foot-long walkway that's five feet wide. And they clearly told you it was five or six feet. So, I'm just saying, there's...
So, you're submitting pictures just to show that they were not truthful in their statements in front of us last time they were here?
Well, Mr. Sermon asked who the contractor was for their permit under oath. They said, oh, you know, some guy from Wisconsin.
They did.
This gentleman, Weislaw Prochowsk, lives in Palatine with his wife Maria, and they've lived there for nine years. Some guy from Wisconsin. Under oath, the property owner stated the platyp survey was wrong.
I, I understand where, where that's going. That might be a Village Board concern with, because that has nothing to do with where the grill is placed right now.
Okay. So, I just had one other comment that I'd like to make with respect, with respect to statements and the terribly high cost of taking down this grill island, which we were presented with a cost to remove and locate, which was $8,900 to $12,000. And your question tonight was, how much was that permit for all of the original flatwork that was done? It was $7,900 for all the flatwork, and it says so right on the permit, for all of that work. And now, some contractor comes in and says it's going to be $9,000, $8,900 to take down their grill, which is not mortared. It's a dry stack. You simply unstack the bricks, take out the...
Hey, whoa, 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 whoa. Just, she, you have the right to...
Take out the grill, and you take out the rest of the bricks. Move it over, you stack it up again, put in the grill, put in the rest of the bricks. A question was asked, was there water? Is there a gas line? Oops, there was a gas line, and there was no permit for that either. So, a gas line would have to be extended. But it's not this type of cost. These are crazy prices. The quote stated a $55 hourly, right on the quote. That would be over four weeks of 40-hour manpower weeks.
That's for unforeseen work. I don't know what went into the bed, $8,950.
$12,000 was, but not $8,900 was...
Alright, well, this, alright, so, anyway...
Let me close and say, yes.
You know, a lot of what you're talking about, that is maybe more of the Village Trustees. They're elected officials, they make those decisions. They're elected officials, they make those decisions. We're a volunteer group, and we interpret the zoning code.
Got it.
So we don't get into he said, she said. We look at the code and we interpret it.
Really, what zoning codes and zoning ordinances really are designed for is, it's a balance between private property rights and restrictions to protect the public.
I understand.
Originally, it was, it was really severe cases. Let's say, not having a copper smelting plant next to a school, right? So we wanted to separate those things. So you have industrial areas, you have multifamily areas, you have office, right? So you have all these different areas, how high a house can be, you know, all of these different things. So that's, and we interpret those codes. So again, the zoning codes are there for the balance between private property rights and protection of the public. So, we're talking about a grill that's three feet outside of compliance...
Yes.
...that you said you really don't have a problem with.
Other than that it's not following the rules?
Right. And again, there's a balance. What our job is, to look at issues that come before us, and then see what balance we can strike for relief of the strict application of the codes. We do listen to neighbors quite a bit, and that does sway our decision. So really, what I think, what I'm feeling from all of the board is, and I understand that there's, there's quite a bit of history between you and the, you and the neighbor. Whatever that history is, there's some history. But we want to know how it affects you, and you said it really doesn't.
Functionally.
Functionally. So if you can speak...
So far, I have to say that, having gone through this experience, the village procedures in place are really working, aren't they? Even though there's a lot of manpower involved here, people coming down for meetings, for zoning, for Board of Trustees, the applicants have pulled two of their variance requests. Now, that tells me that the procedures are working. And the only thing left, and this makes it a very easy case for the ZBA, there's only one variance left. And so, it really makes your job so much easier. My hope tonight is the property owners would voluntarily opt tonight to do the right thing, and voluntarily bring their illegally-built grill island into compliance by moving it. Failing that, I urge all of you members of the zoning board tonight to appeal, to uphold Willmet's standards of variation in denying this request, which was, and certainly is, based purely on convenience. Willmet is so resident-friendly. I see people all the time coming before you, and coming before the Board of Trustees. I understand sympathy, even leniency, when there are difficult conditions, like some of the conditions tonight, triangular lets, all these things. These are difficult conditions that you have to deal with. But not on, not on convenience, which is not a hardship, and certainly not on out-and-out illegal buildings. Please stop illegal builds in Willmet and deny this variance request. And for the record, I would like to say that we have always had a very, very lovely, cordial relationship, until this variance thing just came up. We don't have a history. They're lovely people. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak either for or against this case? So you know, applicant, please come back up. We may have some more questions for you.
Lisa, can I, can I ask Lisa a quick question, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. What type of fence could they put? Right now, it's an open wrought iron fence. What type of fence could they put between the property if they chose?
Up to six and a half feet, and it could be solid like the...
Okay. So visually, there...
It'd be more impactful than it is right now.
Yeah. So right now, I mean, it's, the grill is lower. We're looking at basically two countertops on the side of the grill, which a lot of grills have full-down areas anyway, so...
And there's shrubbery, and there's, you know...
Okay. I just wanted to confirm that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. So, Ms. Perwin brought up a couple of things, you know. I think, as she admitted, that functionally, she's not opposed to having the grill island there. We discussed that if it was five feet further to the north, towards the rear of the lot, it could be in a permitted location. The Village Board has the say on any, if we want to call it, you know, penalties involved. We are just interpreting the code here. And I think it's to, it's in the best interest of this board if we look at the application as if it was being presented to us, not having been done, all right?
I don't necessarily agree with that.
Okay, but this is, this is what, this is some of the direction that I'm receiving from staff and from council. We often find gray areas.
And we don't always agree.
And we don't always agree. And that's why we have a board of six and seven people, so that we have different opinions.
Instead of just Pam.
Instead of me leading everybody down the road, yes. So, Ms. Perwin brought up some things. Are there more questions for the applicant?
I have a question for the applicant along those lines. Let's pretend that Peabody and Sherman are here, if you remember them, and go in the Wayback Machine. And this doesn't exist.
Wow.
And you are before us tonight, asking if you can build on this virgin untapped soil that you have in your backyard a grill island. And the question has come up, what's the hardship that you should put the grill on?
If we knew, we wouldn't be here asking for a setback. We would have just built it.
Right, so, I mean...
No, but I'm saying...
Need to know the answer. If, if our job is to pretend like it doesn't there, and say, would we approve this variance? Because a hardship that you're going to spend six thousand dollars to move it is not, doesn't meet the criteria, in my opinion. So why does it need to be there? What is it that drives that location?
I mean, the biggest thing that we can come up with is, right, is, are you, our lot is actually pretty unique, right? It's not a weird triangle, it doesn't have that. But we're on the front of Lake Avenue. It's a busy street. You guys talk about noise, you talk about traffic. It's probably one of the busiest streets in, in Willmet, outside of maybe Green Bay. The back of our yard is perfectly quiet. It's on the golf course. It's the reason why we bought the house, right? So in that situation, it's very unique. If we move the grill five feet, or six feet, or five point eight, nine feet further back, we could actually put the grill there, and put the pergola up, and they would both be conforming. Moving that farther out then takes away from the view, the whole purpose we bought of the house on the golf course, is, because you could see that, that big view, right? So closer to the house, it gives us a wider view. We move it six feet out, it then cuts down the view. It cuts down our view, it cuts down her view. When she looks out, now she can see the grill and the pergola six feet out, versus it being closer to the house.
Delicious.
I mean, that's, that's kind of the only thing we got.
Yeah, and I mean...
As far as the hardship, because, to your point, if we had the Wayback Machine, and we went back, the biggest issue here is, we got a permit for this, and the permit we got obviously didn't include what we thought it included.
Right.
Right? So if you look at the permit we got, there's a plat of survey, and there's the permit. There was no drawing. So when we came to the village, right, and I think part of this is, you know, maybe the village shares the burden in this, and we came to the village, no one said, hey, is there, was there a drawing?
This is not three feet, or...
Right, hey, this isn't, whatever it is. No one really said anything to us. And if you read the language, and I think one of the trustees brought it up in the permit, if you read the languages in there, that's not my words. It's not her words, right?
I don't talk at grade.
Right. So someone at the village helped us, and obviously, some of those questions that could have been asked six years ago in the Wayback Machine, maybe should have been asked, wouldn't necessarily be in this situation.
Question, how did three feet from the lot line come about?
I don't know.
Do you remember?
It was just, that was what we talked about.
So, the flat work, the flat work's there, and then you just put it on the edge of the flat work, and that's where you ended?
Right.
Right.
But it, you know, I mean, in reading the, in reading the application for the permit, there's nothing in there about having the grill island.
No, because we let the inspector clean out.
There's nothing, and there's no, there's no drawing in there either. That's the plat of survey. There's no actual drawing. So if you actually...
The survey you submitted to, with the application, right?
That's, that's the existing plat when we purchased the house.
But didn't you, then on the next page, there's this drawing of...
No, that, that, we just, that's part of the, we just did that because of this.
That's the newer application.
Yes, correct. So the other thing is too, is, you know, when it goes back to the inspector, and the inspector didn't see a grill, and again, you know, to your question, whether it was there, whether it wasn't, the shape of the patio is completely different as well. So why would that not be a red flag to the inspector to say, hey, the patio is a different shape than what's in the plat of survey? That never came up either.
Yeah, no, it was our...
Right? So there's, I think there's a lot of things that fell through the cracks. We made some mistakes, admittedly, and I think, you know, the village, the inspector probably missed some details too. And it's, we're, we're here, we're here. I mean, that's what it ends up with.
So it was being constructed when this other work, this other work was...
It was. And I have the receipt from ABT where I bought the grill at the same exact time, which I'm happy to submit. I don't think it proves a whole lot, because it doesn't prove that there's bricks on the side, right? It proves that I bought the grill in 2012 when I had the patio. It's a built-in grill, so you could assume I was building in bricks. But again, to your point, I could have bought the grill, sat there, and put the bricks up later. I mean, it doesn't prove anything. I'm, yeah, happy to submit the receipt from ABT, but...
Was the grill up and functional 2012?
It was, yes.
Yeah, and we don't have, we don't have a portable grill on the side. We have a smoker.
It's a smoker. It's a black smoker.
On the side of our house, so there's no portable grill.
Pulled pork and ribs.
Yeah. So, and again...
But that's, there's no portable grill.
You know, and I know Trustee Plunkett has said in the past that they have shown sympathy for cases, you know, based on mistakes, human error, relying on contractors. You know, we are talking six years, and so that, that's, that's all we can really say.
Any other questions? No? Okay. I'm going to close the case, and I'm, yeah, ask if there's a member of the board that'd like to make the motion. Mr. Robkey?
With regard to case 2018Z02, move to recommend granted request for a three-foot side yard setback variation, three-foot separation variation to permit the retention of a grill island at 3730 Lake Avenue in accordance with plan submitted.
And do I have a second? Mr. Boyer, second. Go ahead, Mr. Robkey. Take us on a tour.
I will say something very uncharacteristic for me, because one of my frustrations is when the board doesn't listen to us. I cannot support this, and I can't support it because I don't think it's within our jurisdiction to support it, because there's no hardship, other than a financial hardship with it, which is excluded. The uncharacteristic part is, I would hope that the Village Board would recognize the errors that were made. I think you've clearly recognized them, you've acknowledged them, you've withdrawn a number of portions, including the one that bothered me the most, which was the air conditioners last time. I would hope that, in this case, depending what the other board members, that they would allow you to do this, but I don't believe it's within our jurisdiction to do so, due to the lack of a hardship.
Okay, Mr. Boyer?
This certainly is interesting. The, if, if this came to us initially, we probably would have asked them to make it conforming. However, there's, there's so many, there's so many things within our code that could cause the neighbor to have less light, less air, less visibility to the golf course, a shed, greenhouse, a six-and-a-half-foot solid fence between the lots. There's so many more things that can affect the neighbor negatively that are within code. This is interesting, because I really believe them. There, there've been people in the past that have built things without permits. And I, you know, I get it, right? And I believe, I don't believe them in those circumstances. But I actually believe the applicants in this case that it was, was an error. They, they, they thought, whatever they thought, whatever happened, that this was in process of being built when other things were, were happening. And I, I believe that the inspectors were on, on the property. And it doesn't follow logic that they would be building something without a permit while they're having inspectors walk around the property. If you're going to try to pull a fast one, you don't do that. You finish the work, you leave the, the permit up in the window, and then you continue the work, right?
After the inspection's been done.
That's awful experience.
Yeah.
I know, I know a lot of contractors in the city, so I, you know, I know the, I know the tricks. So, it doesn't follow logic that they would be building something that they don't need a permit for, without, you know, and I just don't believe that they're pulling a fast one. So I believe there's human error here. So then I go to, how is this really affecting the neighbors? And the, the neighbor that is, could be most affected, says that it doesn't affect them.
Functionally, it doesn't affect it.
Functionally, it doesn't affect them. They're opposed because of it's against code. Well, again, the zoning board is here to balance private property rights, which I usually fall with, private property rights. And we're supposed to balance, you know, the public policy and safety of the public. In this case, it doesn't affect anybody in any way, shape, or form. And the only person that it could affect says that it doesn't affect them. Now, I get it's out of compliance, but in this case, it would make no sense for us to make them move it six feet and leave it three feet from the property line, just to get it into compliance. I believe applying the strict letter of the codes to this case as we see it right now is the hardship. I, it does not make any sense for them to move it. Now, if this was thirty, if they're asking for a thirty-foot garage, or an eight-and-a-half-foot fence, or something that's out of code that really would affect the neighbor, a, a unique play accessory, a batting cage, netted batting cage of three feet from the property line, halogen lights to light up the back of the, you know, something that really affects it. I, I would vote against it. But in this case, I, I, I have to, I have to support it.
I would just say that we have made, we've approved similar situations, maybe even more, more severe variances, where we've left it up to the board, and those may not have been honest mistakes, as, as in this case, I agree with your point, Mr. Boyer, that, that they were more, maybe more deliberate, where we've left it up to the board to determine whether they should exact a penalty. But I think in all those cases, we have not recommended that they, that they tear it down and replace it. So, I, I think in this case, I leave it at, the board can decide whether to exact a penalty on the contractor or whoever, but I would not, I, I am not in favor of forcing them to tear this and move it five feet to the north, so I can approve it.
Well, you know, really, they, to make it compliant, they, they don't need to move it five feet.
They can move it two feet.
They need to move it, yeah, two feet.
Move two feet this way, or five feet that way.
Yeah.
Right, right, right.
Right, because they just have to move it out of the setback.
Both of them are de minimis, compared to a lot of other stuff we approve.
Yeah.
So I think in reviewing this as, as new is not a reasonable way to review this at all. First of all, the applicant said they wouldn't apply for it if they were doing it today. So, we're asked to review something that they said they wouldn't be, even be submitting to us. So, also, you know, it was a different board six years ago. It's not the board that's here today, so who knows what that board would have done. A few of us might know, but, in any... So...
I don't have a grill island like that.
You know, so from, so from my perspective, I think you have to look at this as a built structure, and either, I mean, if the board wants to submit, you know, exact the penalty or whatever, or tell them to move it, fine. But I, I agree with Mr. Boyer, Mr. Schneider's analysis of this. I think the, if you move it six feet one way, or two feet the other way, and it's in compliance, it's de minimis, you know, it's not, it's not bothering anybody. It's been there a long time. I believe the applicants, and I think that's a critical part of this. You know, they're standing up here and saying they built in 2012, they didn't know. And if you believe them, then it's, you know, I, I don't think it makes sense to, to tell them that they got to move it. And I get to the other things, you know, you can have a movable grill there, you can have other things there, and it's all okay. So from my perspective, I'm the same place I was last time. You know, I can support this and...
Mr. Sherman, you want to weigh in?
Yeah, I concur with everyone. The only thing I'd add is, there's only a lot of times we're looking at... The only thing I'd add is, there's only a lot of times we're looking at light and air, and how it impacts the neighbors and adjoining spaces, or circulation, or whatever. And I think this was, I agree, an honest mistake, and I think, you know, we're talking about two, two squares that are like three feet square by three feet tall. I mean, they're lower than a fence, so it doesn't affect light, ventilation, any of those issues. So, and, you know, given the contractors, I mean, who knows what could have happened, or what happened, but I think it was an honest mistake. And I think, knowing that you could take, remove that whole thing, and put the grill right at the lot line, where it would impact the neighbor even more with smoke or odors, it becomes a worse situation compared to being three, at least three feet off now, so...
I, I think the, the biggest thing that, that, that I look at, when we've got a variance that impacts a neighbor, and the neighbor comes and says, "I'm okay with it." You know, a lot of times you, you'll get, hey, we're, we're putting an addition on our house, and the side yard, where the house is in the side yard setback, but we're gonna keep it in line, and so the addition's gonna be in the side yard setback. And that neighbor says, "You're building a two-story house in the side yard setback close to me?" "No, that's great, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of you improving your house." We, it's easy to go along with a variance in that case. I think the, you know, I made a specific point to ask our neighbor, is this functionally bothering you? Is this impacting you in a negative way? "No, it's not, it's just that it's breaking the rules, and that's why I'm complaining." That's my interpretation of the response I got from the neighbor. So, ultimately, to me, that's the neighbor saying, "Yeah, it's fine there." You know, functionally, it's not impacting me. It's not, as, you know, Mr. Sherman pointed out, it's not blocking light and air, it's not obstructing the view. So, I, you know, I look at it, and I say, you know, if this would've come to us originally, we would've said, "Could you not ask for that?" But, we're here today, and we're looking at it in this sense, and it's not affecting the neighbor. The neighbor says that. So, I, I have cause to support this. I believe that we can see how this meets our standards of review as well.
I do have one comment. I mean, there's some cases that come before us, where you find out that the third floor is built out, and the clearances were different than they said, and now they've occupied it. And there, I mean, it's, it's a much more critical issue that everyone, the architect, the contractor, the owner, would all be aware of. This is really a minor, minor issue.
Yeah, I, I think, again, we note this often, but every case is unique. You know, you, the lots may be similar in size, but the siding of a house is different. The, the lot size could be different, you know, there's, every case is unique. So, although we may be in favor of something on one case, you know, half a block down, we would be against a similar request, because of unique circumstances varying, addressing those lots, so...
I agree that every case is unique, but what's supposed to be consistent is the criteria which we use to review and evaluate those. I wish we could easily just say, make it happen. I personally have no objection to them keeping that, but without a hardship, and they acknowledge there's no hardship, I don't think we, as a board, I think we're going down a slippery slope if we're just disregarding that, one of the six or seven criteria that we're bound to operate by.
Okay, and that's why I brought up my point about side yard setback, and, yeah.
I guess if they would've came back tonight and said, you know, we're gonna, say it was the first time they came to see us, you know, and they were gonna keep the pergola up, and they were gonna keep the air conditioning, that would've made a difference. That impacts you visually with pergola, and the air conditioning impacts with noise. So, I guess with the reduced requests, you know, that makes a difference. If it had just come back to the board with all three, then, then I wouldn't have supported it.
I don't, I, to be honest with you, I was, I double-checked to see that I said it. I was, no problem with the air conditioning, as, as it was currently existing, but proposed.
Anyhow, any other comments? No, all right, why don't we take a vote?
Mr. Robkey?
No.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Mr. Kolling?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Chairman Duffy?
Chair votes yes as well. That's gonna go as a positive recommendation of the village board. Meeting's on April 24th. You got one more meeting. Could one of you please come up and sign this paper for us? Take one with you, you don't have to sign the one you take with you. And could I have...
Yes, the move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number 2018-C-02.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, as well. All right, good luck.
Thank you. Sorry to scare you by voting no, but good luck.
When you are ready.
Our next case is 2018-Z14, 1200 Cleveland Street. This is a request for an 8.6-foot rear yard setback variation to permit the construction of a one-story attached garage addition.
Hey, welcome.
Hi, thank you, guys. Everybody hear me?
So, these are directional, so as long as you kind of talk at 'em, you should be fine, yeah?
I have a big mouth, so you should be able to hear. My name's Meg Maris, good evening. I live at 1200 Cleveland Street in Womet, and we are asking for a variation tonight. It's difficult when, when you speak of a hardship, because I believe a hardship really does exist within one's personal, yeah, it's personal, right? And I know that the village defines hardships differently, but for, for me, this is, I'm gonna explain how I believe that this is a hardship. We are looking to add, to remove our current garage as it stands now, as a garage, and turn it into living space inside my home. Then I would like to add a three-car garage, front-facing, so I can actually park in the garage, because right now, I actually can't park in our garage as it stands, because it's side-facing. Not a hardship, inconvenience, but it's annoying. So, that's, that's one thing. So, I would like to have a front-facing garage. Where am I going with this? Okay, so, let's start off by saying, my property is legally, is, you know, from Cook County standards, it's 2518 Thornwood. So, back in the day, the front door used to face Thornwood. Well, years have gone by, the house was, you know, redone, and now the front door faces Cleveland, which is why we changed the address to 1200 Cleveland, just to make it easier for people when we tell them, you know, that, oh, we live on 2518 Thornwood, and they're gonna be driving up and down the street. Anyway, so, because we're a corner lot, our front yard, I'm sorry, our front yard, our rear yard, and our side yards, there's a little bit of ambiguity, right? So, for us, we look at our house, and we call it the side yard, where you guys call it the rear yard. And back when this house was originally built, that eight-foot alleyway that was proposed for our property had not been designated as vacant, a vacant alley to the property yet. So, the house that we live in now was built with the parameters in line that, you know, without that eight-foot alleyway. And that eight-foot alleyway was awesome, right? Like, when we, when we bought the property, we were excited they had the extra land. So, unfortunately, the house wasn't built to the best of its ability, with, you know, without that alleyway being considered. So, let's see. So, I guess what I'm saying is, I really would like the village to consider us adding the three-car garage. We have a growing family. I have grown up on the street my entire life. My parents are aging. They live across the street, down a few houses, but they are across the street. And with the way that my boys are growing and eating, and their friends are growing and eating, they are taking over our house. And in the blink of an eye, yesterday, they were riding their little tricycles, tomorrow they're gonna be driving, you know? Anyway, you know, with extra cars and extra vehicles, we really would like to ask for the three-car garage.
So, you, you made a comment, you can't park in your current garage. How come you can't park in your current garage?
Oh, I can't. My husband's Trans Am can, but I cannot. So, it's, it's a two-car garage that he has his car in, but I can't make the turn with his car in it. It's really, our two-car garage has turned into a one-car garage, and I lost to the bandit.
So, is it correct us to say that, that the, the request for the 8.6-foot rear yard setback variation is totally due to the third, third garage?
It's due to the third slot for the garage.
The third slot for the garage.
That's correct.
Are there any other questions for our applicant?
Just, just to clarify, so the, because there are so many different dimensions on here.
Yes. If you tell me what page you're on, I'll follow you.
1.4, I assume?
1.4.
Okay.
So, which ones are the variance requests? Because there's a vacated alley, there's the, what is it, that 18 feet here at the top? Is that the request?
That's right.
That is?
That, that is the, the, they need, they need, if you look on page...
If you look on just the first, on page two, it says required side, your rear yard setback is 26.6 feet, but they are requesting 18 feet.
Right here. Yes.
So, they need 26.
Correct. They need 26, but it's only 18.
18, okay.
And so, you know, we don't use this area as a rear yard, we use it as a side yard right now. If I told you it was over there, I'm sure one of you came over, because there's some photos here. If you actually looked at the disaster that it...
We come there every Christmas.
I'm happy that you do. Well, it looks like Stanford and Sun outside right now, and we're trying to fix that.
So, if, if we call that your side yard, then your house is in your backyard.
Well, I don't have a backyard.
Your house, because your house is in it.
Because my house is in it.
If that's your side, yeah.
No, I know, I know.
So, we can't, you know...
I, I understand what you're saying, but with the way that our house is set, with the, with the way that the property is set up, we actually do utilize Womet as the front yard community. That's where my children play, our soccer goals are right here. I mean, they play in the front, they play football right here. So, we actually don't even really congregate that much in the backyard. My dogs do, but we don't. I understand what you're saying. As far as the legality of it, yes, that is a rear yard. But right now, that rear yard is full of nothing good, nothing good. It's an eyesore. It looks terrible, I'm trying to improve it. It, it just looks awful, and I'm embarrassed, I don't like it. You know, it's bad enough that after December, or after January 6th, when the lights go off during the day, and my house looks like Billy Bob's Christmas Bonanza. And it's awful, and it's embarrassing, but when it all comes down, it's fabulous. But this area over here is really, it's, it's an eyesore, and I really do want to improve the look of it.
So, what's gonna be above the garage, the parking spaces in the garage?
So, I'm happy that you asked. So, every year, we get asked, "Where are you gonna put all your Christmas lights? Where do you put 'em all?" Well, that's where they're all gonna go. They are gonna go above the garage, and my children are actually gonna have an indoor space at night, you know, during the winter months now, that they can actually hang out with their friends in our basement, because right now, it is covered with reindeer, and Santa Claus, and stars, and Christmas lights everywhere.
The basement is?
The basement, the attic, mechanical room, part of the garage. So, right now, in this upper part of this new addition, will be everything. Nothing is allowed in my house anymore, and my kids will actually be able to hang out as they grow, with their friends in my house, so I can keep my eye on them, and know what they're doing, and who they're doing it with. Because we're Italian, and that's how I roll. I want my kids in my house.
I didn't see a second-floor plan in here, Lisa.
There is no second-floor plan, because it's just storage. It's just six foot nine. We are staying underneath the head height. The inspectors are welcome to come over any day, night. I do a lot of building in this town, Lisa can attest to that. I would not do anything, especially in my own home, to risk my reputation building in this town. I've built here for many, many years, I think we're going on close to 15 now, and I don't wanna do anything to, to hurt that.
So, oh, I was just gonna say, one thing that caught my eye when I originally looked at this beyond a three-car garage, because there aren't any other three-car garages in the area, is that you're five foot seven in front of your existing house, where any new homes that are built, we always request that the front door be out in front of the garage by five feet. Isn't that currently the code? So...
Is it? My Greenwood house doesn't have that. When, when was that rule adapted, if I may ask?
2014.
So, to me, it just, it caught my eye that we're all of a sudden gonna put a three-car garage as the main facade closest to the street, and diminish the importance of the front door.
Would that apply in this case, Lisa?
It does not.
No. It wouldn't apply, because it's not new, but it kind of, just as a reference point, it caught my eye. And then the other thing that caught my eye, excuse me for one second, was that the new addition is gonna be several feet higher than the existing house.
Than the existing house, yep.
So, just to, just to touch on, that this doesn't apply in this case, when I went through the codes, I reviewed them, there really isn't much language on attached, attached garage, side yard, adjoining street. So, it's, it's front-loaded garages, or detached garages. So, it, the codes are almost silent on this exact situation. So, when you say that it, you know, the, the five-foot setback on the front facade...
I know, that's for new...
It's for new, it's new construction, but it's also, wouldn't it apply to...
Also for the front yard, not?
Which, well, it's for the, but again, it doesn't, it's silent to this exact case, right? So, I'm not, you know, I'm not sure the spirit of the code is, is, is taken into account in this design, right?
Yeah, but I think the bigger issue is the rear yard setback, than, than the side yard, adjoining a street setback.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have any properties that have that small of an area, do we, in a rear yard?
There's some similar, or some other requests in your packet, rear yard setbacks.
I guess when you, and maybe this is, my aesthetic view of things is, when you're asking, like, for planned unit development, you're asking for a larger square footage or something, and you're giving back something. Well, when you're asking for a variance, I would think that you need to be consistent with just the, the code itself, maybe not the true interpretation, but some of the other stuff. And I guess if you look at 1.11, the dominating element on that whole elevation is, and I know we're not supposed to interpret design, but if you're asking for a variance, I think we have some leeway to, to view that, it just...
I think the, the key question, I don't know if you have, we have any more questions for the applicant, is what is the hardship?
Yeah.
I think. Goes to his favorite subject.
I could just add to your one point that you mentioned. I think that right now, the dominating feature, when you look at this, is the garage, because it's the only thing that shows detail. The brick detail on the house isn't drawn in, the, the window grill, you know, the grills on the window aren't drawn in, there's nothing drawn in on the house, so it's all very, you know, very plain when you look at it.
But the, the overhead doors are more commercial doors, when you've got a 10-foot-high door.
Oh, they won't be.
Well, no, but that's just the, the scale of them, a 10-foot door is considered a commercial door.
Well...
I didn't even notice that, that they're 10 feet high.
The only reason, I will say, we wanted the, the one car, the first one, the very first stall, the one that extends the furthest back. We did want that one to have the taller door. We do have a boat and a trailer, which is adding to the Sanford-like sun appearance in my front yard. It is not extending past the front of my house, but it is there, and I really don't want it to be out there anymore, because I hate the look of it. I can't stand it. And I do want the higher garage for that. Also, my husband will be pulling that out, if he does need to work on my car, my dad's car, his car, to have the added height of the ceiling, and that's why everything is so tall. The only reason that the architect made the other door, the, the double door higher, was aesthetics, just to make it look better. And if I can do something to help the design of it, I absolutely will. I have no problems working with the appearance committee at all to help make that look better. I take a lot of pride in everything that we build, I take a lot of pride in my own home, and I definitely don't want it to look like a, you know, a clown built it. That, that is not what my intention is at all. But that is, that is why we have the 10-foot door. But I will promise you that the second floor is nothing but storage, and I'm so excited. That is, that's part of, that's half of this, so...
Any other questions for our applicant, before, see if there's anybody else in the audience that would like to speak, or we're good? All right, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak either for or against this case? Yes, okay.
Can I say one other thing? I do have letters from some neighbors in support of this. I do have letters from some neighbors in support of this, I don't know, I should have made copies for everybody, but I didn't want to be facetious and just be like, oh, here you go.
You can bring them up, yep. Thank you, and you may come up, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening, welcome. Thanks for staying up so late.
Thank you, it's a pleasure to be here. So my name is Peter Claduus, I'm actually a resident of Willmet, I live on 2209 Beachwood Avenue, I moved here about three and a half years ago from the East Coast, and I'm actually here because my colleague at work, Kedrick Chamberlain, is not able to be here tonight, and he lives right next door to the north of this property at 1212 Cleveland Street. So I have kindly offered in his absence, he apologizes, he and Maura, his wife, are on a vacation that was planned months ago for their son and daughter-in-law in Colorado, so they were unable to be at the, at this hearing tonight, so I'm here as his, as their advocate. So if you don't mind, I'd just like to read, I'm not going to go into the details, because you have all the materials that they submitted on your behalf, and I'm sure you've read them very carefully, so I'm just simply, if you can indulge me for a minute, I'm going to read their prepared statement, that we worked on to just give you their, their comments to the proposed variation. So, the Chamberlains wish to respectfully object to case number 2018Z14, which is requesting a rear yard setback variation of eight feet six inches to convert the existing attached two-car garage into living space, and construct a three-car attached garage addition to the north side of the home at 1200 Cleveland Street. As detailed in the, out in the materials provided and previously submitted by the Chamberlains, their property located at 1212 Cleveland Street is directly adjacent to and to the north of the 1200 Cleveland Street property. They share a 16-foot vacated alley with the 1200 Cleveland property, thus giving eight feet to each property owner, and you can refer to Exhibit 1 of their document. The proposed addition reduces the rear yard separation and encroaches on the open space between the two homes, extending across the width of the vacated alley and into the Chamberlains' yard by six inches. And I will show you in a minute, you can look at the drawing that they submitted, Exhibit 1, and you can see the schematic that shows in red what the encroachment is, that's actually directly under their property. They find such an encroachment to be unacceptable, particularly given that there are no mitigating circumstances, and a conforming addition could be accomplished with a minor change to the plan, such as constructing a two-car garage instead of a three-car garage, or modifying the plan design to reduce the size of the overall addition to stay within the required setback. Finally, the Chamberlains are very concerned that the variation and resulting addition will negatively affect their property value. It will alter the essential character of the neighborhood, as there are no other three-car garages in this area, and the planned addition will be inconsistent with the rest of the neighborhood. In closing, the Chamberlains purchased their home and moved in August 2016, they wanted a home in a desirable neighborhood, convenient to both of their work locations, in a thriving community where they could enjoy the lake and be close to downtown Chicago. They have made a substantial investment in renovating the home, in keeping with the character of the surrounding homes, and want to protect their investment for the future. Given their concerns, we respectfully and sincerely hope that the zoning board will deny the request for variation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd ask if anybody has any questions for him, but he really can't answer on their behalf.
Although I've studied everything graciously, in case you did ask me for anything, but I'm happy to just demonstrate.
Go ahead.
Did you say there was a six-inch encroachment?
Yes.
On to their property?
Well, it would be, no, what they're requesting is, because of the 16-foot, because of the square footage of what their petitions are proposing, in order to meet the setback requirements, the variance actually has to be encroached on their property by six inches, so it has to be, I think, 16 feet six inches, so if you look at the drawing here, if I can put it down, place down or up?
No, you're good, doesn't matter.
Oh, sorry. Right there, so I'll just try and point, so you can see on the property line, if you actually have to put in the new, the rear yard setback, based on the fact that they're sharing the 16-foot, eight feet, eight feet, if you add the numbers for them to comply with the setback requirements, they actually have to take not only their eight-foot section, but the Chamberlains' eight-foot, plus an additional six inches in order to make it.
Right, so what he's...
Change of the dimension of it?
Yeah, what, yeah, so basically, what he said, he's just adding the eight foot six inches to the existing property line over to show that this is what the setback would need to be if it was to be in compliance.
Right.
Because the alley was vacated, and half went to...
Yes.
Your...
So they're actually, they're actually borrowing, they're actually taking their portion of the setback, plus six inches of their actual property in order to conform to the setback requirement.
If you were to look at it as, yeah, yeah, right, everybody understands that?
Yeah.
All right, any other questions for our, no, we're all good? Thank you very much, appreciate your efforts and your time.
I'm happy to do it.
And welcome to the process.
Whatever the outcome is.
All right, please come on, yeah, come on back up, Ms. Marison, and... So...
So I did comprise a list of some other three-car garages in the neighborhood, it's on one of my lists, so unorganized, okay. These microphones never work during the meetings, other than when you hit them, okay. I do have some other properties in the neighborhood that do also have three-car garages, if you're interested, I can read off some addresses. 1212 Princeton, on the next street over, it is not attached, it's detached, however, it is a three-car. We have one at 2338 Elmwood, that is also a newer home, it's a three-car garage. We have some in the neighboring property over a couple blocks away, 2711 Blackhawk, we have a few on Mohawk, 2333 Iroquois, but there are, there are some other homes, it's definitely not the norm, I understand that, but there are other homes that do have it, although I don't feel like that's the argument here tonight.
So, you know, in, in looking at your application, I think our biggest issue is, where's the hardship to grant you the variance, to be in the rear yard setback? And as I, you know, glanced through the plans, how come, how come you can't use the existing garage, or part of the existing garage, to accomplish your goal?
Well, how would I do that? I'd have to, I, I, I wouldn't be able to do that, to use part of my existing garage would change the symmetry of the home, it would change everything. If you look at the window placements on the existing garage, and how it is, especially on the inside of the home, there's no way to physically actually make that be a garage wall that would support the roof, the whole construction of that would not work, and it's, you know, you're not the first to ask that, but if you actually look at the garage as it stands right now, there is not a way to successfully do that without changing.
Yeah, I mean, it just seems to me that, that, you know, you could, you could structurally follow the rear of your house, or, you know, through the middle of the garage, and then it's essentially cutting the garage in half and creating one space for you, and then you just put a two-car garage next to it, and you don't need the additional.
Well, then we also lose the space that we're trying to gain on the inside, which is also...
Well, you'd lose half of it, but then you wouldn't be asking us for our variance.
Right, but I am asking you for a variance, I have to try that first, I really, you know, the hardship for us was the way that the house was built, if, you know, we could also just build the largest two-car garage that we could, but for eight feet, eight feet, the neighbors can't even see us in the spring, in the summertime, when everything blooms, we can't even see the neighbors with all the shrubbery that we have, there's...
But you were going to clean that up.
Well, I hope that we can get rid of most of it, it's a disaster, but we still will put screening. If you've seen our house in the summer, not only in the winter, you'll see my husband has got a very green thumb, not just a red and green thumb, but he's got a very green thumb come summertime, and our house is full of foliage, and he prides himself on that. Right now, that area is a disaster, there's poison ivy everywhere, I know firsthand, it's just overgrown shrubbery, it's just not pretty, it's something that we've never really devoted time and money to, and now we'd like to do it, we'd like to do it right, and I'm asking for this, you know, if, this isn't a McMansion house, you know, I've built many of those, I'm not saying that I wouldn't love to live in one, but me staying on the street is more important than having the McMansion house. If I could achieve both things with increasing the inside of my home, the living space, and the garage space, and stay on the street, I would be the happiest person. I don't want to leave, I hope my parents are going to be here for many years to come, we got great news today, which was so happy, so even if I don't get this, I really don't care.
Okay, are there any other questions for our applicant?
23.24 by 33. So, I, I'm, I'm sensing that the board is looking for a couple things, hardship, and I think the board is kind of looking at the size of the garage, now, you're a builder, and I'm sure you do a great job, so you know the ask is, I mean, a thousand-square-foot garage is big, that'd be, it'd be great, right? You know, having more space is awesome, it's great, but it's a, it's a pretty big ask, right? So the question I would have is, is there, you know, having, if you don't get the variance, is the reduction in the, you know, the setback that you need, that'll leave you with a roughly 772 square-foot space, right?
It's not, well, it's not only so much that, because the overall design of the house really does, the exterior, the look, the, how the house is now, Mel and Larry, the original owners, really did a beautiful job, and the house symmetrically is perfect, you have two windows to the right of the front door, you have two windows to the left of the front door, it's a very balanced house, you've got two dormers on the top, so how it stands right now, without adding the garage, the new, without making the existing, part of the existing garage into the new garage space, would throw off the balance of the design of the house, and from an appearance standpoint, I really feel like that would be, it would be, it would have a negative effect on the overall, for me, that's how I really feel, and if you can't do it right, then I just would prefer not to do it, because I think it wouldn't, it wouldn't serve the integrity of the home well. Do I, listen, I get asking for, I actually never really thought about having a thousand square-foot garage, as you say, it's, now I see where my husband's eyes gloss over whenever we're talking about this. I can tell you, it would be very well-served, and if this house were, if we tore this property down, if we ever did tear this house down, the house that could replace this, on this size lot, would be significant, it would be big, it would be bulky, we could go, what's the new rule, I can't keep up with the new rules, what's the newest rule for height, overall height?
In your district, it's thirty, three zero, 30 feet.
Oh, 30 feet, okay, well, you know, we could still have a big block of a house on that size property, it's a 75 by 133-foot lot, because that vacated alleyway was designated to the property after the home was built, I feel like the hardship is, is that the design, the flow, everything, for the use of the house wasn't met to the best of its ability, so I understand what you're saying, but...
Right, just as a zoning board, we have to look for certain things to do part of our code.
Right, well, I feel like the hardship just is the timing of the, of the delegation of the, of the vacated alleyway to the property, and we're trying to make it more usable, we're trying to make it workable, more functional, we have a ton of impervious space right now, if you see, who came, which one of you came to our house to take photos? Anyone?
I walked around, I didn't take photos, though.
Okay.
We all came to your house.
Did you see the driveway, how it is all hard surface, and you can see it on the drawing, you can see how much of it is hard, it's hard surface, it's all impervious, so it's not, we're not, we're not asking for any extra impervious space, in fact, we'll probably take less, to be honest, whatever isn't being used, we'll, you know, break up and put dirt, and my husband, for sure, will be planting more foliage, if, you know, five-foot, pulling the garage further forward, five-foot is a problem, I'll push it back, I don't care, it doesn't bother me at all, but to get this disastrous nightmare cleaned up on the side of my house is something I really want to do, and the neighbors and I, I will say, the Chamberlains did just move in last year, we have had conflict with them, nothing about the Christmas lights, because her birthday's on Christmas, and she does love the lights, so it's not surprisingly about the lights, but it is about me calling the, talking to one of her workers who is cutting pavers at 8 o'clock at night, and when we come home from work, here in construction all day, I don't want to hear that, and I certainly don't want to hear it when they're not using water, so that is when the relationship between the Chamberlains and the Marises kind of went south, and we haven't been able to rectify it, unfortunately.
So, I mean, I, I have to believe that, you know, you keep bringing up the disaster between the houses, I mean, you could address that without doing an addition to your house.
But we can't, I have a boat sitting there with a tarp on it, it looks ridiculous, it doesn't...
But that's, I mean, the disaster you're referring to is...
It's all of it, it's the boat sitting there, it's a wheelbarrow sitting out there, I mean, it's just kind of, it's a mess.
Okay.
And I would like to improve it, and for the eight feet that I'm begging for at this point, I will work with the village, and I will take any of your advice, I would not, I really would not like to disrupt the symmetry of the house, I really don't want to, I don't want to touch that, and we'll take the expense out of it, it has nothing to do, at this point, with the expense, we'll take that out of it, I just feel that for the integrity of the home, it will ruin the design.
Okay, any other questions for our applicant? We're all good? All right, I'm sorry, I can't have you add anymore, just procedurally, yeah, all right, I'm going to close the case, and I'm going to ask if there's a member of the board who'd like to make a motion, Mr. Robkey, your motion?
As regards to case 2018Z14, move to recommend granting a request for an 8.6 rear yard setback variation from the construction of a one-story attached garage addition at 1200 Cleveland Street in accordance with plan submitted.
About a second, Mr. Boyer, a second. All right, Mr. Robkey, your motion, you can have a seat.
You know, it's always the issue of hardship, I've heard the hardship is symmetry, Fontainebleau's a beautiful chateau, it's not symmetrical, but it's very well-balanced, I've heard the hardship that you got some land for free, that it's a growing family, but what it really just looks like to me is a, a big three-car garage that's really not a three-car garage, because it's for boat storage, and I just don't see the hardship, and I can't support it.
Mr. Boyer. I, yeah, as a zoning board, we have to look at, look for hardship, and we have to create that balance, personal property rights versus, you know, the strict application of the codes, and, and in this case, it, it feels like too big of an ask. When I looked at the codes, it really is, it really is silent, and almost frustratingly silent, for this type of situation. On a 10,000-square-foot lot, you can have a 600-square-foot detached garage, on a 15,000-square-foot lot, you can have a 800-square-foot garage, right, 15,000, or limited 800 square feet. In this case, just because of the way the codes are written, you can have almost anything, right? But, but for this setback limitation, I don't think it's within, also, within the spirit of the codes, having a size garage like this, aside of the way it is, of course, I don't, I, I don't really see the hardship to give the 8, 8.6 feet. If we remove the, if we, if we remove that, the applicant redesigned it, there it's over 700-square-foot garage, which is over the size that's allowed for a detached garage on a 10,000-square-foot lot, and they have a 9,000, 9,600-square-foot lot, so they would be limited to 600 square feet, so they're going to get over, you know, over what would be allowed for a detached garage on this lot. So in light of all those things, I, I don't feel the hardship has been proven. The design is nice, but I, as a zoning board, we're in a tough situation, I don't feel as though we can, we can approve it.
Any other comments?
I concur, I mean, there's, there's not a hardship.
I mean, there's, it's not a hardship right now. It's just an accommodation or a request for space. So, you know, if we're going to follow the zoning code, we, it's tough, it would be difficult to support this. There's no hardship.
Mr. Coling, any comments?
You know, I mean, one of the positives, I mean, there's, you know, all it is is the rear yard setback and what's kind of a strange lot because of where it's located, on Thornwood there on a corner lot. I mean, there's no FARA, there's no impervious surface, there's no other things that, you know, that run with this. So, you know, it is a little bit out of the norm and, you know, we do bend over backwards to do two-car garages, but three-car garages, we don't. So I'm kind of on the fence on it.
Mr. Schneider?
I agree with what some of have said. I don't see the hardship. Boat storage is the requirement. I think the applicant could store this boat somewhere, somewhere else. So I don't see the hardship for asking this request.
Yeah, my, yeah, my, my initial response was, yeah, well, they're, they've got a rectangular lot and then, you know, the house, it's a corner house, so I'm willing to overlook this, the side yard adjoining a street, but it's the rear yard setback that I can't get past. And then additionally, as you look at the plans, there's, I mean, there's got to be a way that you can accommodate this by, you know, by maybe not taking the whole garage, the existing garage as part of the house and maybe, there's got to be a way that you can accommodate or accomplish this. And by throwing the three-car garage against the rear of the house, you know, you create this little courtyard in the back that, you know, how functional is that afterward? I don't know. I just, I thought maybe there's, there's got to be a better way to, to make this work. So without any kind of hardship that I could see, for the, for the rear yard setback, I just, I didn't see how I could support it. I was hoping to hear something that showed me a hardship and I just didn't hear it tonight. It seems to be a convenience as opposed to a hardship.
So why don't we take a vote? Well, hardship's a hardship, not a convenience.
Mr. Robke?
No.
Mr. Boyer?
No.
Mr. Coling?
No.
Mr. Schneider?
No.
Mr. Sherman?
No.
Chairman Duffy?
Chair votes no as well. That'll go as a negative recommendation to Village Board if you so choose to take it that far. Meeting's on the twenty-fourth. So I do need you to go up and sign one of these letters acknowledging your presence and the dates. Can I have someone?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. See if I can find it real quick.
Move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number 2018Z-14.
Second.
Second, Mr. Sherman. Thank you all in favor.
Aye.
Aye as well. Microphone's now open for public comment. If anybody would like to make an announcement. Seeing no one, we are adjourning the meeting. Thank you.
Total Info, Daily.[817.93]